Okay, Mr. Mayor, we are live and ready when you are.
All right, sounds good. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. It's a regular meeting of the Saldovia City Council, Monday, October 13th, 2025, time is 6:05 PM. And we'll go ahead and do roll call. Keith Lee. You there, Ashley?
Circles of death.
There we go. Now we got you.
Perfect.
All right, so their internet's real good in Homer, too. All right, Langbart.
Here.
Uh, Barber.
Here.
And Rojas.
Here.
And Peyton.
Here.
Okay, we do have a quorum with everyone in attendance tonight. And, uh, hi to your Liz, if you could lead us off in the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we have no excused absences tonight. That'll take us down to item D, um, agenda approval. I'll look for a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Rojas to approve tonight's agenda, the second by Peyton. Any further discussion on the approval of tonight's agenda before we vote? Okay, hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote on the approval of tonight's agenda. All those in favor, Keith Lee?
Aye.
Langbart?
Aye.
Barber?
Uh.
Rojas?
Aye.
And Peyton?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes with five in the affirmative, none opposed. That'll take us to item E, the consent agenda. All items under the consent agenda are approved with a single motion, no discussion, and one vote. A council member may request to remove an item for discussion and a separate vote. Items removed from the consent agenda will be placed under new business. Uh, tonight's consent agenda consists of the approval of minutes of the regular meeting for September 22nd, 2025. Those are in your laydown. And then we have a couple of ordinances. Uh, the first one's ordinance 26-04, a non-code ordinance to the City Council of the City of Saldovia, Alaska, amending the FY 26 budget to recognize small liability accounts carried forward. Um, that's recommended also for a public hearing on October 27th, 2025. Um, that's found in page five of your packet. The second item, uh, second ordinance on the consent agenda is ordinance 26-05. That is a non-code ordinance of the City Council of the City of Saldovia, Alaska, amending the FY 26 budget through the appropriation of additional community assistance program funds for a cybersecurity improvement project. That is also recommended for a public hearing on October 27th, 25, and that is found on page eight of your packet. Does any member wish to remove any item for further discussion off of the consent agenda tonight? Okay, hearing none, I'll go and look for a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion by Rojas to approve tonight's consent agenda with a second by Langbart. Any further discussion on the consent agenda before we vote? Hearing none, we'll go and vote on the approval of tonight's consent agenda. All those in favor, Keith Lee?
Aye.
Langbart?
Aye.
Barber?
Uh.
Rojas?
Aye.
And Peyton?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, five in the affirmative, none opposed. Thank you, everyone. Uh, let's see. Item F, mayoral proclamations. We do have a mayoral proclamation tonight. This is going to be proclamation 26-01, honoring Vivian Rojas for her 15 years of dedicated service as a council member to the city of Saldovia. And Vivian's with us tonight, and I would also like to read that for everyone. Um, again, this will be the proclamation honoring Vivian Rojas for 15 years of dedicated service as a council member to the community of Saldovia. Whereas the success and progress of our community are built upon the vision and unwavering service of our volunteers and leaders. And whereas first elected in 2010, Vivian Rojas has served the citizens of Saldovia with distinction and integrity for 15 years as a member of the Saldovia City Council. And whereas Vivian's commitment to public service has helped preserve the unique culture, heritage, and natural beauty of Saldovia while championing efforts to improve the quality of life for all who call it home. And whereas during her long and exemplary tenure, Vivian has been a driving force behind the continued implantation of Chinook salmon smolt in Saldovia, implementing policies and budgets to improve city finances, community advocacy with the Alaska Department of Transportation for ongoing Alaska Marine Highway System Service and with the Kinnick Peninsula Borough School District regarding education. And whereas she has consistently championed the best interests of the community and played a key role in shaping the future of Saldovia with her support of infrastructure projects, vital community programs, and innovative policy decisions. And whereas the city of Saldovia wishes to express its sincere gratitude for her deep commitment to the public good, thoughtful leadership, and countless hours Vivian has devoted to public meetings, community events, and strategic planning for the city of Saldovia. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Jeremiah Campbell, Mayor of the City of Saldovia, and on behalf of the Saldovia City Council and all Saldovia residents, do by here extend our sincere gratitude and appreciation to Ms. Vivian Rojas for her many years of dedicated and loyal public service as city council member for the city of Saldovia. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Saldovia to be affixed on this 13th day of October, 2025. Congratulations, Vivian, on all your many years of service. You're on, you're on mute.
Sorry about that. My last time being told that. Thank you. It's been a long, long 15 years. Totally enjoyed it, and I look forward to seeing the new council continue on, but thank you everyone very much. Good luck, Jeremiah.
Yeah, thank you, Vivian. We're gonna, we're gonna miss you for sure. I appreciate all your, all your efforts over all these years, and you've always, you've always been there to, to pick things up and keep things moving along, and, and that's just much appreciated all the way around, and I've enjoyed working with you all these years, so.
You bet. Thank you very much.
Yeah, anyone else on council wish to have any other comments or like to say anything? Go ahead, Harmony.
I'd just like to thank you as well. Sorry, my connections, I don't know what it is that's going on. Things are a little slow. But yes, thank you for everything you've done, Vivian, and for all that I've learned from you in the last three years, too. It's been really helpful having somebody with so much history on council to listen to your thoughts and get the history on everything that we've had to work through. So hopefully, we'll still be able to reach out to you as a resource is needed because I know all your years here and everything you've been a part of is, it means a lot, and you know a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley.
Thank you, Ashley. Harmony?
Yep, uh, just echoing the same sentiments. You know, you've always, uh, you've been here for such a long time. You've seen the community through so many things. You, you've been in the community as a human and adult and a participant for so long and have added so much value to the conversation. You always bring a level of dignity, grace, and articulation to these discussions, and it's definitely a loss to our community to, to see you move on to your next adventure, but thank you for all the time that you've spent here. It's been a true, true pleasure, Vivian.
Thank you, Harmony.
Thank you, Harmony. All right, well, if there's no one else, thank you again, Vivian. I appreciate it, and, um, we will get this signed and over to you, and, um, definitely gonna miss you, so.
Not sure what I'm gonna do with my Monday nights now.
You'll just have to listen now.
Yeah.
That sounds fun.
That'd be good. Thank you.
All right. Okay, thank you, everyone. Um, and that was, uh, our mayoral proclamation, um, 26-01. So again, honoring Vivian for her 15 years of service. All right, we'll move on to item G, uh, public presentation prior notice. Um, I don't think we have anybody signed up. Right. Item H, public presentation for items not on the agenda. Do we have anyone tonight, Liz, for that?
I'm not seeing anyone, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, sounds good. Um, we'll go ahead and do item I, committee and advisory board reports. We have none. Item J, administrative reports, none. Item K, public hearings, none. Item L, unfinished business, none. And item M, new business. This is item M1, resolution 26-07, certificate of results of the election on October 7th, 2025. Um, these will be found on page 10, and, um, city clerk, we'll go ahead and take this one over.
It's tough. I want to thank our election judges for showing up and for all the time and volunteering. And I do want to also recognize Cindy Mom, who did our borough elections with serfism here, but she did a wonderful job there. So, we have here the package and envelope that we've opened from the election board, and we've inspected the contents, and it has the certificate of election here. We're filling in for the tally. Our canvassing met as a board earlier today at noon to go through the absentee ballots that were available. We have six on hand and ready for tally. And so, let's go ahead and do that. Do you want to turn that mic on, Kathy? I turned mine off. And you'll find the unofficial tally from Election Day on page 11 of your packet as well. One ballot. One for Keith Lee. One for Coleman. I'm gonna pass those around. One for Keith Lee, one for Taylor, one for Barber, one for Coleman. One for Keith Lee, one for Taylor, one for Barber, one for Coleman. One for Keith Lee, one for Barber, one for Coleman. One for Keith Lee.
Yeah, we got a tally.
One for Taylor, one for Barber, one for Coleman.
Aye.
One for Keith Lee, one for Taylor, one for Barber, one for Coleman.
Aye.
That is our six absentee ballots. Will the judges please total up the lines? Diamond, would you like to announce the totals?
Announce totals, all right. Thank you. All right, Keith Lee, total of 39, Taylor, total of 32, Barber, total of 33, Coleman, total of 35. Do you want me to do the write-ins soon? All right, total amount of write-ins is 10.
What's that?
We could use another pen.
All right. Uh, as Ms. Kennedy said, we have Keith Lee with 39, Taylor with 32, and three write-ins for that seat. Barber with 33, Coleman with 35, and seven write-ins for that seat. And... I'm missing anything. And then we're gonna offer resolution 2607 with those totals added in there, and I'll bring that back to council discussion for certification.
Okay, sounds good. Um, thank you to the, um, canvassing board for everybody for participating in that, making sure our elections went smooth. Um, as always, much appreciated. Looks like a fairly, um, decent turnout for a, um, midterm election with no, no big offices going on, so that's good. Um, and yeah, welcome to, um, we've got Amon Coleman, uh, as a new council member, and, uh, Jackie Taylor is a new council member, so, uh, looking forward to both of you joining us, and, um, yeah, that'll be, that'll be good. Move back to a, a full council. Congrats to both Ashley and Jack for, um, running and your reelection, so that's good. Anyone else? Um, and obviously, I'll be in support of, uh, approving resolution 26-07. Anyone else with any additional comments, uh, regarding resolution 26-07? Our results of our local election, certifying our results of our local election?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yeah, go ahead, Vivian.
Yep, I would also agree with, um, that I am in full support, and I thank those that ran and those that are, have their seat and that are back in the seat again. Thank you very much, but I am in full support. Thank you.
Thank you, Vivian. Okay, um, Liz, anyone from the public that wanted to comment?
I'm not seeing any hands, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, sounds good. We'll go ahead and bring resolution 26-07 back to council for final action tonight. Vivian, you might as well make your last official action.
I guess so. You have, I don't have the, the numbers, so you have to help me out.
26-07.
Okay, I, uh, I would like to make a motion in support of, uh, ordinance 26-07.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve resolution 26-07. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, and we do have a second by Langbart, and the original motion was by Rojas. Any further discussion on the motion to approve resolution 26-07? Okay, hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote on the approval of resolution 26-07. Again, that's the certification of our results for the election on October 7th, 2025. All those in favor, Keith Lee?
Aye.
Langbart?
Aye.
Barber?
Uh.
Rojas?
Aye.
And Peyton?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes with five in the affirmative and zero opposed.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you to our election judges. You do not need to stay for the rest of the meeting.
Thank you, ladies. Appreciate everything. All right, uh, appreciate everyone on that. Um, and that'll take us down to item N, the city manager's report. And this should be in the laydown.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, this is in the lay, the laydown on page seven. I did try a new format, so you guys will have to let me know if this works for you. I've had a little bit of feedback from a couple of council members on how it's really hard to keep track of all of the ongoing projects and grants, uh, specifically grants that we have happening, um, because we're giving frequent updates, but you're not seeing them all at one time. Um, so trying to just keep those at the top of the page, and then in that middle column in bold italicized, I'll put any updates, and we'll just update them as we need. Um, so kind of a nice way to see them all together. Hopefully that helps. If you see, looking at it, we have 20, um, projects, and this is, there's a couple on here that are not grants, and we have more that are projects that aren't on this list because they're not necessarily as active or, or having a legislative process, but, um, for the most part, having these 20 solid projects and, one, two, three, four, five, six, um, of them are just applications, so they're, they're pending award. Uh, but 14 of them are, we're actively moving through at any given time of the day or week, so this is, um, my finance officer likes to tell me that it's, it's getting, well, she doesn't like to tell me, but she's told me recently that it's getting a little much to continue to track all of the grants, just to give you guys an idea of what we're up to. Um, so, not to digress, I will give you an update, as I said in the middle. I also, because we had them all together, did a really fun exercise and just put the total of the awards that we've received to date, um, versus what our local match is, and some of that local match is in kind. Uh, and then, of course, 140,000 for Jack Loaf, so that's a big piece of it, but, uh, 10,941,537 dollars awarded to date. Um, and some of those are still pending the grant agreement, but, uh, we have received notice of awards for all of those, and 291,507 in match. And that, the two big pieces of that being the fuel facility improvements project, some of that is in kind, some is local, and the Denali, or sorry, the Jack Loaf Bay Dock Replacement Project, um, with 140,000 local. Raw water also has a 40,000 local, so, um, just, you know, some, some money that's been already appropriated, um, or allocated to these projects that we anticipate seeing go out the door in the next couple of years. So, if you have any questions on the overall format or totals there, I'll give an update on some of the projects. Uh, number one, Jack Loaf, we did submit that environmental assessment as I, um, provided that update at the last city council meeting. Um, however, I received an email on September 30th that our environmental specialist, who was in the process of reviewing the environmental assessment, um, was going to be furloughed starting October 1st if the government shut down. Um, sure enough, the federal government did shut down, so, uh, there is somebody in the office that's still tracking this project. I reached out today just to see if there was gonna be any progress made, uh, during this shutdown, and I haven't received any feedback. Um, I do know our grant specialist is still working, so just trying to get an update on if progress is still being made or if we're at a standstill until, um, the government reopens. I did want to put a reminder out there that we did have a pre-authorization approval from MARAD to spend money on this project prior to the agreement because it was included in the, um, budget narrative and the project narrative that is supposed to be reimbursable upon the grant agreement, so that's 270,276 dollars and 35 cents that we have spent to date on this project for the NEPA and engineering, and that, uh, upon the grant agreement approval should be reimbursable. Um, and we just, it's, you know, we've talked about this before, being that's a risk, uh, on the city's end to work through this project in that manner. Um, however, that was, um, these are necessary steps in order to complete that project, but I just, I wanted to make sure that everybody is aware um, that that is still ongoing, and we still are spending money. It's coming to an end here. Um, as, as MARAD's received all of the documents that they need, so any last minute expenses will just be uh, edits and, and changes that they need, and until we get that agreement going. Number two, Jack Loaf, Jack Loaf Uplands application. Uh, we did receive the final funding and decision determination. Next steps are the entry authorization and a thousand dollar fee for that entry authorization application, proof of current liability insurance, which I was able to get them today, uh, and then request for survey and land appraisal. So I don't know if you guys want to have a conversation about this in the near future. Um, certainly, when we go to talk about the cost of a survey and land appraisal, that's again, um, more expenses that would need to be appropriated. Uh, we did put in a request DOT to help with the cleanup of that lot, and I haven't heard anything back, but I'll check back in with Romo here this week and see if they've had any progress. The cleanup of that lot and I haven't heard anything back, but I'll check back in with Romo here this week and see if they've had any progress. Um but would love your guys' feedback if you have any at this point. Um otherwise, we'll continue to proceed. Pay the thousand dollars and then um bring back a request for appropriations for the survey and the land appraisal when it comes. Closer to time for that. Any feedback? No? Okay, um if no feedback on that one, then raw water transmission line replacement project. Uh the draft contract was approved by the EPA and provided to the contracting firms last Friday. If you guys remember, uh this was approved by the city council, the award was approved by the city council at their September twenty second meeting. And that is um to contract for this project with East Road Services and Kuna Engineering. So they are working through that draft contract now, um and then we'll continue going through negotiations and hoping to get this resolved quickly. Uh because I know that they want to get over here and and perform the survey and we've talked about potentially going an additional or going a a alternative. Route for placement uh of that transmission line, which I also. Did reach out to the University of Alaska and asked for their permission um to move that line and I'm waiting to hear back from them. So we're making making progress on that project and hopefully we'll get that in the ground next spring or summer. The field facility improvements project, that is SFL Roof. We did sign the agreement for the award and are looking forward to scheduling a kickoff meeting here in the next week or so. As well as issuing an RFP for that project. If you move down to number eight, multi-purpose building generation improvement project. Uh the contract for the installation was signed and the automatic transfer switch was ordered and is on its way. So generator's onsite, the automatic transfer switch should be here, I think, next week. Uh and then they'll be looking at traveling down and completing that work for that project, so that could be happening here in the next month. Number eleven, the VSW project for the sewer treatment facility was combined with the number twelve. VSW project slough sewer improvement project for a RFP for design solicitation. So that's called wastewater collection and treatment improvements designs, design solicitation uh that was issued last month and closed October tenth. The project specifically for sewer treatment facility, we received or VSW. Received one million five hundred and seventy three dollars and five hundred, one million five hundred and seventy three thousand five hundred dollars. Um which is a ten percent of the overall project. And this project is supposed to be included in a multi-year priority list and prior to it prioritize for additional funding in future fiscal years as necessary. Uh with the total project cost being anticipated at fifteen million seven hundred and thirty five thousand dollars. And then so the second part of that uh design solicitation is the slough sewer improvement project, as I said. And again, uh rolled into one, closed October tenth. I will be sitting in on the review committee for this project. Um and heard back today that they are getting ready to schedule that. Uh they only received one for, let me see here. Yeah, they only received one proposal, so might be a quick review. Additionally, through VSW, we have a water and wastewater system evaluation, planning grant or planning project. And that uh solicitation was also issued last month and closed October third. They received two for that. Um and I will get an update on those proposals uh here within this week. For an update on a non-grant project, the SVFD repeater replacement upgrades. Has been an ongoing discussion with the SVFD board. They did approve fifteen thousand for the project. Uh the new repeater was ordered and then we received a work order, or sorry, a invoice for the work. For the installation of equipment needed on the Becker Tile Tower in Homer. Um and it came above their fifteen thousand approval, so the SVFD board met last week. And approved the additional funds for that project, which has come to sixteen thousand nine hundred and forty three dollars, forty three dollars and eighty one cents. And that will be the installation of the new repeater up at the school and a control station. And antenna on the Becker Tower so that the Homer dispatch can talk directly. Over a radio to the Sildovia Dispatch, uh which was necessary for the new repeater. Because the new repeater won't work with the Z-tron, which is what we've been using to date and is an outdated kind of antiquated system. That they call in over a phone line and it calls the repeater and goes through dispatch. Um so we're going to take that part of the puzzle out um and moving forward, they'll be able to radio directly. So it's exciting that that's that's moving forward. Some other updates below our project list is water treatment plant update. As you are probably aware, the city issued a public notice from DEC. Uh regarding our turbidity not meeting treatment requirements in August twenty twenty five, that notice is located in this packet. Um and we know we did receive some feedback on it. I did provide a response on Facebook to one comment on it. And certainly in the future, if we have to do this again, we'll look at uh issuing a public notice along with it, just to talk about. Um why we're receiving it, when we're receiving it and what we're doing uh to ensure that we don't receive it in the future. Again, we know that how to do with our stream current detector and our increase of turbidity. Which the stream current detector then increased the coagulant and you've heard the story before, but. Um since then, their turbidity is now back to normal. Our stream current detector remains on manual. I mentioned at the last city council meeting that we might be looking at replacing that part, which is like a twenty thousand dollar expense or more. Um in speaking with our remote supervisor Todd Cook. Uh and with our public works and making a plan through this process. Uh we have determined that we are not going to replace that stream current detector and we're going to remain on manual operations. I think the last I heard, there was only like two stream current detectors actually operating within the state. Um and that there are plenty of stories of communities facing this same situation, including the city of Homer. Um when their supervisor Todd came online years ago, their stream current detector wasn't working and he, that was one of his first goals is get it up, get it working. They did, it broke again. Uh just, you know, they invested tens of thousands of dollars into this part and to the, to date, they remain on manual operations, so. It seems to work fine and gives us a little another level of um of just regulating. And watching and oversight on the in the coagulant being injected into the system. So we're going to stick with that. So with that, we also had our remote, oh sorry, our um. Remote supervisor Todd Cook was here and they were able to install the new booster pump during that same week. The uh cabin shoneman with Alaska Rural Water Association was also here. Uh and he assisted with our sanitary survey, which was due this December. It's every three years we have to do this report. Uh Todd was also able to work with Public Works on fire, rebuilding um some of our fire hydrants and flushing them. And we'll be back in the spring to assist with flushing um our whole distribution system. We uh we did this last fall. And that's something we'll want to continue doing every year. Uh and we also have our new DEC remote maintenance worker. Who will be in Sildovia November nineteenth to twenty first for a site visit. It's kind of just like a meet and greet. Uh getting to know our system, that way if we have any questions or we need any help or support in the future. Uh he he's had boots on ground and knows what's going on. And along with that visit, our remote supervisor Todd Cook will come over again, so it'll be a a fun little group of people here. Uh checking out the system, hanging out, uh going over it. If anybody wants to meet uh Todd or. Um Ryan or even Kevin, next time he's down here, please let me know. They're really great resources and we really enjoy leaning on their expertise. So if you guys have any interest getting to know any of these gentlemen, let me know and I'll make sure that uh we make that happen. We have completed our annual evaluation of the city's streetlights and we did submit three additional lights to be repaired. Along with a request that was made last month, so that repair was, request was made last month um in the east edition. So now we have four lights uh scheduled to be repaired through the Homer Electric Association. And they have stated they have plans to be in Sildovia this week to make those repairs, so we look forward to seeing them and hopefully that does happen.
Heidi, can I ask you a question before we move on there?
Uh huh.
Um what, so years ago, we talked about the streetlights, um how we've got the old streetlights that. Um are kind of noisy and obnoxious and cast light everywhere. Um three sixty basically on some of those. Are they gonna rip, any of those new ones, the ones that they're gonna repair? Are those gonna be LED or are those gonna be old school again or what what came of all that? I it's been a while since we've talked about this.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Uh yes, so the agreement was that as they uh repaired the lights, they would all be updated to LED.
Okay. And then those also have the shrouds on where the, we don't get so much light pollution and the light basically just goes down. And I mean, it goes down and out, but it does, it's not like the old ones where they're they're three sixty obnoxious. Um. You know what I mean? They're completely different, the way they, the way they look.
Yeah, they are different the way they look. It really depends on who you talk to on how well they shield. And how well that's received. Some people like them and some do not.
If if I may.
Yes, go ahead Vivian.
Yeah, my comment would be, be cautious because the LED lights are great savers of electricity, but they are. Blaringly, it's like being in a stadium. The one in front of my place that got put in, it's like being in a baseball or football stadium. So I think people need to be aware, cautious of, even if they put a shroud on, it's like, like the old lights, they could actually put a shroud. They made it point down, but when you've got a tall pole, that light goes forever, so be cautious. I'm 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 one of those people against light pollution, but be cautious of what. Of of being aware of what it's gonna do. It's it's bright and it's overpowering. Just my comment. Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank, thanks Vivian. I mean, I, we've got a few lights around town that I know are fairly obnoxious, so yeah, no, that's a. Heidi, obviously you'll have to manage that with with HEA and just stay on top of that as those, those are replaced and hopefully we get, you know. Decent results off of, off of what they put in.
Uh thank you, Mister Mayor. They have stated that are, if there are lights that we want to retire. Um that that is something that we can discuss as well, so if there are areas that it looks like that light may not be necessary. Or that it's overkill, um that could be a discussion that we have. Uh probably a a community or a council discussion would be a great forum for that. I've seen it in the minutes in the past where they've done that. Um knowing that it is a city budget, um budgetary item, as the the city does pay the bill for the streetlights. It's along, along with any repairs that are done to them. Uh so if that's something that the council wants to discuss in the future, uh certainly as staff, we can kind of go through and do a review and see. If there are any that um could be recommended for retirement. I I know that in the past, when, you know, this light or that light's been out, it it's, it's normally. We get responses at fifty fifty of leave it out, keep it or put it back on. Um I'm not really sure what the right answer is, but we can do an evaluation if you would, if that's something that you would like.
Might be, might be worth a discussion. It'd be nice to get, you know, some some feedback or some solicitation from the, from the pub, I mean. Yeah, everybody's got different, you know, different stuff going on in front of their houses and on their streets and stuff. Sometimes it's as simple as just. Either reorienting, you know, the the light or, you know, putting it on a, on a different pole or like you say, maybe, maybe. It's overkill in some of these areas, so.
Yeah, we can take a look at that, Mister Mayor, and and think about a discussion moving forward.
Okay.
Okay, if we're moving on from that, the SPD truck, which is now the VPSO truck, did make it to Anchorage. Um part of that evaluation for work that needed to be done that I would, I believe I forgot to mention previously, but maybe I did. Uh was that we also had a transmission recall, so we did send it to Kendall Ford regarding that recall. And then we're gonna look at some of those other item and items and then depending on how that goes, it may go to Safety Alaska to finish up. Uh some of those last um uh repairs that are needed. Because they're due to the equipment that was installed, like the after factory equipment that was installed through uh Alaska Safety. For the equipment that's related to um it being a police vehicle. So we're, we're getting it, it's getting in the works and then hopefully we'll be back down at the end of the month or beginning of next month. Um our lovely VPSOs have been a great supporter of that and actually Dewey is the one that drove it up. Um and they paid for gas for that, APIA did, um and are supporting us and driving it to the different shops. If it needs to move shops, they'll, they'll drive that and help get it back down, so they've been good, good supporters and partners. We're trying to make sure we get that truck taken care of. I wanted to give a quick update on the Sildovia Arts Council dock uh that was in the harbor. I don't know if you guys saw it, but it was kind of holding the harbor down a little bit. Um had some water in the pontoons and it just uh was getting pretty heavy. Uh we had some pretty good discussions with some of the Sildovia Arts Council members about what to do with the dock moving forward. And came to the consensus that it needed to be removed from the water so as not to have the liability of it sitting in the harbor or somewhere else. Um in the slough or bay area where it could potentially um cause a hazard. So with that in mind, Public Works was able, they had a few um volunteers and then Public Works. Was able to help pull the dock out of the water, up the Church Beach ramp. And stored it nicely back in a corner over by the Sisbee lot. Uh and sure enough, pulling that out of the water, you could see um where there are holes in the bottom of that. Uh of the pontoons and the water was just pouring um out. Harbor Master Jant Peterson has some video of it. Um where there's, there's, the metal is just weak and needs to be reinforced and it needs to be cleaned, so it's onshore now. Um it's Arts Council, was, some of their members were uh there during that extraction and. Um they're all aware of where it's at and that it needs some love before it goes back in the water. Uh and so we're hoping um that hopefully that gets done this winter or spring. In order for us to help again uh launch it in the spring, because I know they want to be able to use it for Songs on the Slough. And it's true form and glory with the clam shell on top, so. Here's hoping that they're able to work some magic and get that repaired. I also attended the most recent Arts Council meeting. Um and do intend on participating a little bit more frequently moving forward as we've. Um you know, had some more frequent involvement with the Arts Council in this last year and they are a member of the city. Uh so wanting to support them and um provide, you know, additional, additional input and information. As they have these discussions on various topics moving forward, so getting a little bit more involved there. We are going through our winter transition. Uh the last day to haul out boats is October fifteenth. The harbor water has been shut off. The washdown building will be winterized by Sisbee this week or next. The RV park is closed and city benches and signs have been picked up. Public Works continues to prepare for winter. Uh with outhouses having been pumped or being pumped, they were still working on that today. Uh tires on vehicles being changed and and the sander being mounted on the flatbed, so all those typical things as we get ready for snow. We also have a new accounts representative through Alaska Communications uh with, with timing was just great. She reached out uh to schedule a meet and greet and then we had that most recent outage, so was able to work closely with her during that. Time and that was due to a microwave, the microwave connection to Homer is up and working now. Uh but I believe the impression I received is that that uh microwave. Signal has still degraded, so they're working through the process on what to do to improve that connection moving forward. We also received a quote for repairing four of our eight ladders on the municipal dock. And then I need to ensure that it also, we had six platforms that we were looking at that needed um some various repairs. So making, I need to make sure that those are included in this quote. I have a feeling that only one of them is, so the quote could go up. Uh once the other five are included and then that should put us in pretty good shape overall for the dock. Uh and that would, that initial quote is thirteen thousand four hundred and ten dollars. So as we go through the capital improvement plan and we talk about priorities and projects moving forward. That's certainly a big one to consider in the next year or two. Um I'm sure that price is only gonna go up as we're talking about. Um, I'm sure that price is only gonna go up as we're talking about um, ordering the steel and fabricating those um, pieces of infrastructure in order to, to, and place on, on the dock there. So um, just something to consider as we move forward in those discussions. The AML Winter Conference is December eighth through the twelfth, and that's a little misleading because that is just for the AML portion. There is a NEO, which is a newly elected officials training. That's gonna be on December, oh no, that is, that's the whole thing, December eighth. And then the tenth through the twelfth is the AML portion. So eighth through the ninth is normally the affiliate meetings. That'll be the mayor's conference. The newly elected officials, uh, training, city manager conference, city clerk conference, city finance officer conference. All happen those first couple of days. And then following that is the AML conference. Um, where they'll have concurrent breakout sessions. Um, with a lot of different experts in multiple fields. Um, that deal with local government. So you're gonna have everything from sales tax to housing to huh, planning. Yeah, there's a, a whole slew um, of topics that will be discussed. And highly recommend it. It's great when we have more people that attend because there's so many great topics. And not one person can attend them all. We do have council member Keith Lee, um, who showed interest and incoming members. Uh, Taylor and Coleman, who have also expressed interest in attending some of the conference. And if you guys are interested, anybody else, please let me know because we can sign you up and make sure that you're registered and have travel. And are able to attend. I know council member Barbara tried to last year and it didn't work. So here's another opportunity. If you're interested, uh, highly recommend it. Please let us know here in the next month. That way we can make sure to make arrangements beforehand. I'd also like to remind you guys of some upcoming council business as we come into the fall here. There was an introduction uh, that was delayed for the abatement ordinance. So that needs to come back on to the agenda as an introduction and then a public hearing. That, look forward to that at the next meeting. Uh, we also are due for a work session on the final capital improvement plan, final draft. Uh, that way we can get any additional feedback on that before it's uh, adopted by the city council. We're also looking at a joint work session at the beginning of November with the Planning Commission. On the final draft for the comprehensive plan. After your guys' uh, amazing feedback and reminder that if you have any additional feedback. Please get that into me by tomorrow so that I can pass that along to AML so that they can finish up, uh, finish up that draft. We also are looking at a work session and or AML attendance for that annual council training. Let me know if you guys would like to have an in-house in Sildovia council training. We can even either put that on by staff or we can invite DCRA to perform a training over Zoom. They also have their own standalone training that's a week long in Anchorage. Uh, that council members can attend or the AML. So lots of opportunities. There's something you feel like you need to brush up on or you think it'd be just a good idea. It's always great. Um, to do it where there's an opportunity for the full council. And just because sometimes it's nice to have that refresh. And then a work session, normally that's in December for city council priorities for the calendar year. That'll be twenty twenty-six. So definitely have some business coming up. Um, and then that's not including the regular business. It's gonna be ongoing. But comp plan and CIP are the big ones. AML Grant Writing Services, uh, I did meet with them this last week. And there are some opportunities that are coming up uh, for dam improvements and possibly for housing needs assessment. So they're working through those uh, potential projects. And we also have on our docket, the historic boardwalk improvements, which we submitted a grant application for. And along with the harbor waterfront boardwalk planning project. And looking at the completion of the value-added building and a planning project for a heavy equipment and emergency storage building outside of the inundation zone. There are other projects, especially as we go through the COP, CIP, that you think should be put on here. Or to be prioritized above these projects, please let me know. As you also may be aware, the SOC coordinator position was posted. Lisa Stanish, uh, we want to thank her for, I think she had about five years of service up there. And um, did an excellent job. She has gone um, back into retirement. Or at least into home life. And so we've posted the position and received one application. Uh, we're looking at potentially hiring later this week. So we'll give that update when that becomes available. We are also in the middle of the FY twenty-six audit and that's being prepared now and scheduled to take place in January. And everything else, I believe you are up to date on. If you have any questions as you read through it, please let me know. Lastly, I would say the enclosed in your packet is that public notice for the turbidity. The Department of Fish and Game uh, notice for the deer released on Southern Kenai Peninsula. If you haven't heard about that, they did release deer uh, here on the south side of us. So that was an interesting read. Thank you, Michael Opheim for providing that. As well as a notice from KVB of a subdivision replat for Peter Leno. And that has to do with the fact that they are within three hundred feet of city property. So you guys get that official notice. That that has gone through the Planning Commission and the Planning Commission uh, did recommend approval for that replat. And then a twenty twenty-five annual AML Winter Conference membership packet, just to give you an idea of the agenda. And uh, different events happening during that December eighth through the twelfth conference. So that's what I have for you guys. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you, Heidi. Any questions for the manager on her report tonight?
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead, Vivian.
Yeah, no questions, uh, comment. The, I like the way you laid out the projects and the um, uh, grants laid out. Each one and then have a status report. I think that would be very helpful for council. Very nicely done, Heidi. Thank you.
Thank you, Vivian.
I have a question.
Yep, go ahead.
Back to the raw water line. Did we get an engineer's estimate on that before it was awarded East Roads? Or any comparison to, was there an engineer's estimate for replacement or not?
Through the mayor. Excellent question. Yes, we had an engineer's estimate um, from BSW. Which is what we were working off with our grant application. Well, actually it was a congressional direct spending request. Uh, through Lisa Murkowski's office. Then that went to the appropriations bill was passed. We had to combine projects because the price did increase for that project. Um, with inflation over the last couple of years. And then we, um, knowing that we needed additional funding, we actually took that to our state legislators. Um, to Sarah Vance, Representative Vance and to Senator Stevens. Uh, who graciously put it through um, for a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant. Through the desert, uh, state designated legislative grant process. So.
What was the engineer's estimate to the contractor's bid? How far apart or how close were they?
Uh, actually, the engineer's estimate was above this contractor's bid that we just received. And pleasantly, because it has not been the case for quite a few projects recently. Pleasantly, all of our proposals uh, did come under the engineer's estimate.
It's good, Dan.
Anything else, Jack, or is that it?
I think that's it. Um, I don't want to take any more time with the council here.
Okay, sounds good. All right, item O, informational items not requiring action, none. Executive session, none. Uh, council and mayor comments concerning items not on the agenda. Keith Lee.
Uh, nothing this evening. Thank you.
Sounds good. Uh, Langbart.
Uh, no comment for tonight. Uh, Vivian, thank you for all the years you've served. Um, it's been wonderful serving with you and best of luck on your next adventure.
Thank you, Maggie.
Thank you, Meg. Uh, Barbara.
I don't have any comment.
Rojas?
Yeah, thank you. My last comments. Um, Heidi, it's been wonderful seeing you grow into this city manager position. You're doing a wonderful job. Liz, you really picked up in the position. Just for the council, those of you that are moving up into the council chambers, just know that you have got an incredible staff down at the city office. And, and those employed by the city have done a tremendous job. And Mayor Campbell is a great, has great leadership skills and really works at council very well and with us. Anyhow, I wish you all luck in the future and uh, keeping Sildovia growing and moving forward. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Vivian. Appreciate that. Uh, Peyton.
Yep, uh, statework Heidi is always, thank you to our electoral staff and to our new members for joining us. And to Vivian for all her years of service.
Okay, thank you, Harmony. All right, yep, I'll close it out too. Same thing. Um, Vivian, it's been a pleasure. We're gonna miss you. And again, welcome to our new council members uh, moving forward. So um, yeah, and that's, I think that's what makes, you know, local government good. You know, we have, um, we have people that have served a long time, that uh, bring wisdom to the council, leadership to others. And then, you know, when that time comes, we have turnover, we have new people come in, we have, you know, new ideas. Uh, it's just, it's good for government, you know, that it's not, not always the same people. We'll, we all take our turns and, you know, hopefully uh, new people come, come in and things get, things get fresh. And we, we move on. So um, looking, looking forward to um, starting off the year with a whole new council. And a full council. So that'll be, that'll be nice. So Vivian, did you have anything else?
Uh, nope.
Okay, sounds good. So, all right, with that, um, I will, let's see our next, what do we got here? Uh, next meeting, our next regular meeting will be on Monday, October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. At six PM and I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
And do we have a second? Okay, any objections? All right, hearing none, we will go ahead and adjourn tonight's meeting. And thank you everyone for coming out tonight and we'll see you again soon. Thank you, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Vivian.
You bet. Good night.